Well, good evening all. My apologies for our late start. It's 7:20. I will call the meeting to order. It's January 11th. This is the meeting of the Board of the Selectmen. All members are present. If I could invite everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I'll get it started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am going to take a moment of personal privilege here, in part, a little bit with convention. This past week, I'm sure many of you are aware, Wilmington lost one of its dear sons, a much-beloved gentleman, teacher, track coach, Mr. Frank Kelly. And so if you'll all just join me in a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Kelly. Thank you all very much. We have transmitting of Treasury warrants, 25, 25A, 26, 26A, 26B, 26C, 27, 27A, 28, and 28A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor. Unanimous? Thank you. No minutes to approve today, and we'll jump to our appointments. Again, we were in executive session at 6 o'clock discussing real property issues. We went long, so my apologies again for our late start of the open session. 7 o'clock appointment is with Mr. Timothy Broderick, Superintendent of Shawshine Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School, to introduce us to the -- it's his introduction formally to the Board of Selectmen, and he'll be advising us on planned upgrades to the school fields. Mr. Broderick, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's nice to meet you all. Some of you I've met before, some I never have. I've been the superintendent at Shawshine Tech since October 1st. I'd like to thank my two Wilmington School Committee representatives, Jim Gillis and Bob Peterson, for being here tonight. I can be very brief this evening, which I imagine you might appreciate, but certainly if you have any questions or you want me to talk anymore, just let me know. I'm following Charlie Lyons. As you know, he was our superintendent for 28 years. Big shoes to fill for me, and this project is something that Charlie initiated. I did not become superintendent 101 days ago and design a new athletic complex. I hope to be good at this job. I'm not that good. Charlie contracted, along with the school committee's support, GALE engineering last year to do an assessment of our outdoor athletic facilities. As I'm sure you also know, it was very important to Charlie Lyons to maintain the campus. The building's in great shape. I don't know how recently many of you have been there, but you walk into the place and it's hard to tell that it's nearly 50 years old. It's really beautifully maintained. We have an eight-year-old roof, which we just had inspected to make sure that it's in good shape. It still is. That roof is going the last 20 years, and we're going to make sure that happens. I learned from Charlie Lyons, and I hope it sounds that way, because this is a good thing. This is how we should be responsibly maintaining our assets and our facility. The last piece, the next step, is the outside grounds. Our athletic facilities are in tough shape. So, GALE associates came in and did an assessment for us. This shows the existing condition of our track, obviously pretty beaten up. I learned a lot of this from them, from the engineering firm. This crack, they tell me, suggests it's not only a flaw in the surface, but it tells us that the material under the surface of the track has deteriorated. So this is actually caving in a little bit where you see a crack across it like that. This is a surface imperfection. We put some money in our capital budget a couple of years ago to have this patched, and the company we brought out to look at it said, "This is not a patch job. We can't do it." You can see our jump boxes are in tough shape. This is the outer lane of the track, the sixth lane. We only have six lanes all the way around the track, and regulation requires that this immovable barrier, the fence, be three feet away from the outer edge of that lane. Obviously, it's much closer than that, so the first thing GALE associates advised us was to close that lane. So we're now working on a five-lane track. This shows some of the grass conditions. I didn't bring all of the pictures there. The GALE associates report, and you do have a copy here, is this. I won't read it to you. I can get you another copy if you need it, but I think you have a couple of them floating around. So we have some grass that we're re-sodding every couple of years. We spent $35,000 on sod this fall to get through the fall season. That's been an ongoing investment because of the tremendous amount of wear that our fields are taking. The stands unfortunately are no longer code compliant in a number of different ways, and if we try to address any one of them, we're then required to address all of them, which means they're really not salvageable. The stands need to be taken down and replaced if we touch them at all. I'm going to jump through this fairly quickly, but again, happy to answer questions if you have any. I'm going to talk about the current facilities that are underneath the plan here for a second. This is our baseball field. Other than a short porch in right field, which the players don't mind that much, it's our best field. It's in pretty decent shape. This is a soccer field and a practice field. Right now, softball plays here and here. You can just see the ghosting of that image. This doesn't exist right now. The problem with this is that this is the 200-foot mark, and when you play concurrently on both fields, left and right field overlap, which for obvious reasons could be dangerous for the left fielder and the right fielder. Over here, we have our football field, currently a grass field with the track that I've already shown you the condition of. And down here, underneath this plan, there's a very small practice field. GALE associates did a study, again, it's all in here, by meeting with all of our coaches, our athletic director, and other user groups, including some youth leagues that use our fields, and figured out that we were impacting these grass surfaces approximately four times as much as they could sustain and still allow us to grow grass, which explains why we've had to re-sod them pretty frequently. This is the plan GALE associates recommended. The school committee has endorsed it as a master plan over the next several years. This is a new lighted track with eight lanes on the working or 100-meter side and six lanes the rest of the way around. This is a turf field. There are lights, new stands, a press box. When we expand the amount of seating in the stands, we have to add a restroom facility here. However, that won't be a part of the bond issue that I'm going to talk about a little bit tonight. The school can build that. We built this fieldhouse over the last few years in memory of an instructor at the school who worked in the masonry department, which was particularly nice because a lot of the work here was done by masonry students. We dedicated that a year ago last Thanksgiving, just before our home football game that day. This is another building that our students built years ago. They'll do the same thing out here. So structures aren't a part of this. We're just talking about the fields. So we have a turf football field with lights and a new track. And then up here, if you come to the school, you've got Cook Street along here, and then Alexander goes up here. So this is kind of up a hill from the rest of the facility. If you drive in our back entrance, you go down a hill right here. So up on this hill, GALE's recommending we level things off, and we put in another turf facility for baseball and a multipurpose rectangular field in the outfield.
Yeah. What's there now currently? Is it wooded?
Woods.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all wooded. The cross-country trail goes through there, which will need to be rerouted, which is -- I used to be the cross-country coach, so I happen to know that. But we can -- we'll figure that out. If that's our biggest problem, we're going to have no problems at all. This does require some retaining walls. There's a pretty steep drop over here, so a lot of what needs to be done in the construction is a retaining structure, particularly right around this corner of the new baseball field. I'll leave this up and move to the fiscal impact. So I brought 10 copies, thinking that some of your audience might want them, and not knowing exactly how many people you have here. You'll notice that Charlie Lyons' name is on the front of this, because, like I said, he started this project before I became superintendent. So some of this is his work. He and I have been working together for the last several years, particularly over the last three. Charlie was kind enough to mentor me, to help me through a master's degree program a few years ago, and allow me to watch him work during the last few years of his career, and I'll never be able to thank him enough. I didn't keep a copy, but it's -- I'm pretty sure I know what this says. The first page -- no, that's okay. The first page talks about what we owe you. This was important to Charlie. It's important to me. He trained me. We owe you a capital plan, and I won't go bullet by bullet, but we owe you a capital plan that comes true. We owe you a capital plan that's conservative and responsible and protects the asset. We expect to be on this campus, in that school, for at least another 20 years, and as long as we continue to maintain it appropriately, that's going to happen. Charlie's done a great job, and I only hope to continue to work in that manner to maintain the asset there. The next page shows the impact of a $6 million, $55,000, 15-year bond issue to conduct Phase One of this plan. So if I can bring you back to this for a second. Phase One is the turf field, track, lights, and stands, and the baseball facility, and I'm sorry, I neglected to mention, five tennis courts. Right now, we have four tennis courts over here. That's Phase Two. I'll get to it in a minute. So Phase One, again, and the price is $6 million, $55,000, is the track, the stands, the turf football field, all lighted, and the turf baseball field with a rectangular multipurpose field in the outfield, a little bit of parking, and five tennis courts. There's a little other infrastructure to create ADA-compliant access to the restrooms in this fieldhouse, but that's all included in Phase One, which, if we break ground the day after graduation this spring, we hope to be playing football in this field next September. Maybe not until September 15th, but that's our target. Phase Two is a pair of grass practice fields down here. Right now, there's a much smaller grass practice field under there, which we'll continue to use until we get to Phase Two. Phase Three is reconfiguring the softball facility so that we move this diamond out to here, probably make this the varsity diamond. This one's varsity right now. And they become two concurrent-use fields. Still grass, that's what it is now. In fact, the grass out here probably won't need a lot of work. This will be the third and probably most affordable face of the entire thing. $6 million gets us most of the way. It does most of the work. The impact, however, if you look at the bar chart, which is blue, you all have it, it looks like right now, is significant in the next two years. So if you turn to the next page, you'll see how we can blunt that impact for the towns. In fiscal '16, and then the next two years, '17 and '18, this chart shows you all of the mortgages that we're paying off right now, including, I want to direct you to the red one in the middle. So in fiscal '16, it was $285,675. That mortgage is paid off in fiscal '18. So by '19, that one's gone. So what we're really looking to do is blunt the impact of this borrowing over the next two fiscal years, and the next page shows you how we can do that. Again, and I'm going to throw a few more flowers towards Charlie Lyons. Because of the way he planned, I don't know if any of you have heard Charlie Lyons in the last five years talk about a new athletic, outdoor athletic facility, but I heard him talk about it dozens of times in the last five years, and I'm going to guess some other people around here did too. So he's been planning for this, budgeting wisely, and we're in a position to commit $450,000 next fiscal year and $350,000 the following fiscal year to help offset the capital assessment for this project. So that's on this chart. That shows up underneath the line and drags the columns down, and if you turn one more page, it shows you what the capital cost or the capital budget curve looks like after we do that. So what we're doing is using $800,000 excess and deficiency over the next two fiscal years to essentially normalize this curve and make it more reasonable for our five-member I'm going to share one more sheet of paper with you, because I'm not in all five communities right now. And this is our projected assessment, change over the next five fiscal years. So because of the use of excess and deficiency to offset our capital budget and to keep it within a reasonable curve, this is the impact. So we're looking at -- now, there are a couple of assumptions here that I want to point out. One assumption is that the proportion of Shawshine Tech students coming from Wilmington doesn't change, because that does change your assessment. If more kids from Wilmington are coming to the school, it adjusts the assessment a little bit. If fewer come to the school, it also adjusts the assessment a little bit. But assuming no change, you'll see a 4.6% increase in our capital budget only. That's not our total budget. Our capital assessment is going to be $1,082,600 next year, working from memory, and this would be the increase or the change just for Wilmington in each year. You'll notice that in years four and five, after we do see some increases due to this project, it's flat or slightly negative, and I'm here to tell you that the man who taught me how to do this taught me that when you tell people you're going to do something, that's what you do. So I'm here to tell you, that's what we'll do. So I hope I haven't left anything too important out, but if I have, by all means, please ask me questions. I've tried to move quickly out of respect for your time, but I'm here for you too, so anything I can do, please let me know.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Broderick. It's a comprehensive presentation, and you've been hard at work right out of the gate, it seems. What I'd like to do is certainly open it up for questions, give the opportunity to members of the board to introduce themselves and ask questions, and again, we're glad to have you here tonight. So Judy, if -- yeah, I was going to start down in the end. Ladies first, so Ms. O'Connell, if you have anything to...
I just wanted to say, very nice to meet you finally in person, and certainly a very detailed, comprehensive presentation here. I'm certainly very supportive of Shawshine Tech and all of your endeavors, whether it's educational or athletic. Don't have any specific questions, other than to say you would be talking about breaking ground. When and when would you project that everything would be completed?
We could actually start cutting trees conceivably after we borrow the money. We could conceivably start work up here if it ever snows, when the snow melts. Over here, though, we can't start working on the football field until the day after our graduation, which I think is June 9th this year, so probably the middle of June. It's an aggressive schedule.
Okay. I don't have anything further at this time, and may have something else.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a few comments. I've been around a little while, and two of my children are graduates of Shawshine Valley Tech, so I've been in and out of school dozens of times. In fact, a couple of years ago, I was at the ribbon ceremonies when Mr. Grossman, they cut the ribbon for the new health wing. And I know Charlie did a fantastic job. He realized the diesel mechanics at that time was not a big cause, so he eliminated the diesel mechanics shop, and he added this wing. And it's a fantastic opportunity for our young youth in this community, in this suburban towns, to go out into the world after learning many things relative to the health wing. And you're right, you're not in here looking for $100 million for a new school. That school is in fantastic shape. For a building 50 years old, I've got to take my hat off to it. I definitely support the proposal tonight, because not only does the students at Shawshine Valley Tech excel in their trade academics, many of them go on to college, but they do a great job relative to the sports, and they've done well the Rams. My son, Chris, he's a Wildcat. I'm still a Wildcat, graduate Wilmington High, but I too have two kids that are Rams. So anyway, it's a great facility. I definitely support it. And once again, if you take a look in the town of Wilmington, we spent over $80 million for a brand-new high school. Tewksbury has a new school. You drive down Route 3A in Burlington, you see a new state-of-the-art football slash field soccer and track. And I think it's time that we do take care of Shawshine Valley Tech, and you're right, this wasn't -- that's something that popped up. Charlie's been talking about this for a long time. I've heard a lot of good reports, and I know you're going to do an outstanding job there as well. But if you -- and I'm sure you had the best teacher in the world, Charlie Lyons. He knew how to run that school. He was a great superintendent, and he looked to the future, because he really cared about the kids in that school. And once again, I do support that. I think that's something that we should all support, and I've been in that school. It's a great-looking building. You don't even imagine it's 50 years old. And once again, you're not looking for $100 million. You're looking for our fair share. I totally support it. And I'll say, I've owned a business for 30 years. I've hired hundreds of students, and I've had several students from Shawshine Valley Tech that come to work at my restaurant at Michael's, and they've gone on to be master plumbers, electricians. They opened up their own restaurants. Some of them I even still talk to today, and they've been more successful, and they even made more money than I have, and I'm very proud of them. And it's a great facility, and I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smaglili.
Yes, I would like to say, nice to meet you too, as well, finally. And having gone through this as a town recently with the turf field aspect of this, it's totally understandable how the fields are overused, and the number you had said, four times, the amount of whatever, the percentage of hours that will be opened up by using a turf field were incredible, like 140 hours, I think, or something a year. I forget the number was, but it's needed and deserved, and hats off to you for taking the reins and running with it. And welcome aboard, and I'd also like to recognize your two board members here tonight, Mr. Gillis and Mr. Peterson. Thank you for coming. And yeah, good luck.
Thank you very much.
I think most of it's been said, but again, welcome, and it's a pleasure to meet you. The one thing that you may have said, if you said it, I missed it, so maybe I'm not the only one, but I would just underscore for folks who might be listening that the $450,000 and the $350,000 that you intend to use to defray the cost of the debt service in FY '17 and '18 are coming from funds that you have that we would think of as free cash as a town. So I think that makes sense in order to make the debt service more manageable. I don't know if the manager has any comments along that side of it, but certainly it's informative, and wish you the best of luck with the project.
Let me go quickly, and I want to turn it over to Jeff as well. Again, I wanted to say thank you for being here this evening. Obviously, the information is valuable, but it's also a great opportunity to put a face behind the name and make a formal introduction, so thank you for being here. You know, I too, like my colleagues, certainly support the investment in the Shawshine Tech. It's -- I have -- my kids are of high school age, and they have a number of friends who are students at your institution, and it's admirable. We have -- we hear nothing but positives out of it, and so it's a real tremendous resource to have that available educational institution right outside our back door. So thank you for maintaining the very positive environment there. I did some coaching a few years ago of soccer, and my daughter now plays field hockey, and we've been out at the fields that are there, and without saying the wrong thing here, I'm glad that you're making some investments. I'll just leave it at that. I do want to also, as Mr. Smaglili said, acknowledge that Bob Gillis is here, and I'm sorry, Jim Gillis and Bob Peterson. And if either of you gentlemen wanted to chime in or offer feedback from your perspective as our members on the Shawshine Tech School Committee, we'd invite you to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a quick comment to thank all of you for your support. We're actually very proud of the physical facility. Tim was being generous when he said that our athletic facility is substandard and poor. There is decorable as our building is shining, a building for a 50-year-old building as it is practically built. The roof is relatively new, the air conditioning is new, the furnace is new, the windows are new. If you walk through that building, I encourage all of you that haven't done so to do it, you would never have been learning this guest that that building is built in. We just completed a complete review of the parking lot less than two years ago, so other than our athletic facilities, which was to be Charlie's last project, places in tremendous shagging, I appreciate the support from all of you, and we just hope you make the same support from the other four committees.
I would echo Mr. Peterson's comments, and I'd like to thank you for your support, because these facilities are a long-time company.
You said they weren't that bad.
Other than the baseball.
His predecessor did a great job.
He's being kind.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for representing Wilmington on that board. Jeff, did you want to compliment or speak to some of the budgetary considerations?
Certainly from a budget standpoint, and Tim and I met a few weeks ago, probably a month or so ago, and he ran through what was being proposed. I think it makes good sense that they're, first of all, that they're able to maintain a excess and deficiencies account that affords them the ability to cushion the impact. So I think it, from our perspective, from my perspective, in terms of the assessment, I think it's very helpful. And I would also note that having been over there on a regular basis to run the track, it is in grave need of improvement. I'll be curious to see where your cross-country trail goes, because I've been out there as well, and hopefully it stays on campus here somewhere.
Well, very well. Thank you all again. Thank you, Mr. Broderick.
If I may, if any of you have knocked into the school recently, please, here's my card. Give me a call. Love to show you around.
All right. Thank you.
That sounds lovely.
In there. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Nice to meet you.
I didn't know that, Deb. I didn't know that.
Hey, there you go.
So we will move to our 7:30 scheduled appointment with Christian Jalev of Jalev Enterprises LLC, doing business as Wilmington House of Pizza, who are here, who is here to request and obtain a common victualist license for the property located at 325 Main Street. Mr. Jalev.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Attorney Robert Peterson for Mr. Jalev, and I was coming actually here first. I was only invited by Mr. Broderick at 6:00. Many of you who have been in Wilmington House of Pizza may recognize Chris. He's a longtime employee. He's in the process of buying the business from Arthur Cianus. Matter of fact, if things go well, he'll be the owner tomorrow afternoon, and he's applying as part of that process for his common victualist license to take over the business. And Chris is a great guy, wonderful employee, and he's taken over a business that's been in that location for over 35 years.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Hull, are there recommendations?
Yes, yes, there are. Recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, Health Director. I recommend approval of the application for common victualist license for Christian Jalev, Jalev Enterprises Pizza LLC, DBA Wilmington House of Pizza, 325 Main Street. Also from L. Spalding Building Inspector. After review and consideration of the town of Wilmington bylaw and all applicable codes, I have no outstanding zoning issues with the above-mentioned business.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. At this time, I'd like to invite any of the members of the board to offer any thoughts or questions. I'll start over here, Mr. Newhouse.
No questions, just a heartfelt congratulations and good luck.
Same. Congratulations and good luck, and I do have one question. You're still going to keep the Wilmington Delight, correct?
Yes, sir.
Never had one I heard the real good.
Yeah. Do you anticipate any changes to menu or anything, just business as usual? Very well, very well. Thank you. Well, congratulations. I'm certain it'll go well, and we'll wish you all the success of ownership. Mr. McCohey.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to wish you best of luck in your endeavor, and I've got to say, I know Arthur a long time, because I owned a business down the street, as you know. Arthur was definitely a classy guy. I used to patronize his Wilmington House of Pizza, and I remember going there when it was Ricky's Doghouse, just kind of saying how old I am. And I want to wish you and everyone the best of luck there. It's a really great operation. You have fantastic food. Thank you.
As the last person, I don't have much to say, that we're all trying to protect that menu interest, and know that that salad dressing is going to change. So, but, and on a serious note, thank you for your presence in the town. I know that it's been a longstanding business, and wish you a lot of luck, and certainly will continue to patronize your establishment. So thank you.
So with all that being said, I think we would accept a motion to approve.
Move to grant the request.
I have the motion. I have a second. All in favor? Unanimous? Good luck, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Our 7:40 appointment is with Town Clerk Sharon George to discuss proposed changes to polling locations. Good evening, Ms. George. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
And I think I'll start with discussing just some of the changes that are going to take place this year with all the new election laws. Last year, the legislature approved a bill last May, kind of a large election reform bill, and with that... a bill last May, kind of a large election reform bill. And with that comes a lot of different upgrades, so to speak, to our election laws. And one of them being is the early voting for next November. And basically, how that's going to work is, right now, from the secretary's office, we don't have a lot of information, but that should be forthcoming very shortly. And they will have early voting two weeks prior to the election beginning. Right now, we have absentee balloting, but that's supposed to be, if you are out of town, you know, you can't be around to vote, so you absentee ballot. Early voting will have no restrictions on it. Anybody can come in those two weeks prior to the November 8th election and vote. So I will designate Town Hall as the, as the polling place for early voting, mostly because it's a polling place right now. And we have all of the equipment here to set up booths and things like that, should we need them. It does have to be manned by election workers, so that is something that had to go into next year's FY 17 budget. And will it be open from May 30 to 4:30? And the secretary's office would like for us to be open one night each week, and I'll do that night myself. One of the other changes is that, starting in August, 16 and 17-year-olds will be able to pre-register. I'm not sure exactly what the thought process is behind it. I'm not totally in agreement with it, because by, if a 16-year-old pre-registers to vote, and then they move three times, you know, it's, it'll be kind of up to us to find out where they are and tell them now they need to go and register, pre-register, or register to vote in the town they now live in. So I don't, I'm not sure what the actual point of all of that is. The next change is that, starting in November of 2016, the elections will start to do random audits, like they'll pick one precinct in one town and another precinct, or, say, one of the wards in a city or something like that. And they will actually come in, and they'll tell you that you are going to be audited, and they will look at all the tapes and the way that you have put everything away. And they'll give a whole list of information that you need to provide them with to make sure that the election ran correctly. Okay? Those are the three big highlights to the changes. There's some other small ones. On March 1st, usually people, voters that are not in a party usually don't vote unless they want to declare a party for the presidential primary or any primary. But that is one of the changes, that anybody can vote in the presidential primary, whether you are, we have all kinds of parties in Massachusetts. You only have to have 50 people sign a petition, and you can have a party. We have the pizza party, we have the pirate party, and this came about, the 50 people signed a petition, and so now we have a party. But nobody is running from those. But we do have four parties this year, and they are Democrat, Republican, Green Rainbow, and the newest party is the United Independent Party, which is causing a lot of confusion, because it has the word independent in it, and people aren't associating unenrolled with independent, because the secretary keeps using the word independent instead of unenrolled. So those are some of the changes that are taking place with the election reform. Now, I will direct you, starting to the memo that the superintendent of schools sent out on December the 2nd, where she gives a highlighted, a very thorough, in-depth, in-depth report on why she wants to change polling places. And two of her biggest reasons for doing that is, one, safety and security of the children, and also a brand-new policy, allergy policy, that they've just changed at the schools, adopted. And I guess it's around food allergies, mostly. And at the Boutwell School, I for have some time had issues with some concerns there. The foyer there is very, very small, and when the CARES program gets out at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, there's too much intermingling of parents, students, voters, siblings of students with their parents, and everybody's coming in and out the same door. And those double doors are heavy, and there's only one set of them, and the school does not want us to have other doors open to allow people to exit from another door around the school, which there are many doors. They want only the front door to be the entrance and exit for polling. So if we have a line, which we try to queue to the hallways, then with people coming in and out, and then if neighbors see neighbors and people are talking, it's, it's really chaotic there when the CARES program gets out to allow parents, voters, students, and everybody to go their own separate ways, coming in and out one door. So I have felt for a while that I was going to come sooner or later to make a request, because I just didn't feel that the polling location at the Boutwell was working very well. And in the superintendent's memo, she does put down that she has a meeting, we did have a meeting in, I think, October, maybe, or November, yeah, I think it was October, where all of us met, myself, the superintendent, the principals at the Boutwell, and the Wildwood, someone from the other high school personnel were there. And we kind of went over, you know, what she was trying to think of for an alternative, and she mentioned the high school, the gymnasium. So we talked about that. I told her that the final vote was with the Board of Selectment, that under pursuant to Chapter 5424, polling location voting resided with the Board of Selectment. And I personally think that it would work at the high school. Engineering has done some rough measurements, and we know that four precincts will fit there quite well. We have more parking at the high school right now. As of today, we have 15,998 voters. Back in 2008, when we elected a new president, we had about 14,000, just over 14,000 registered voters. And then for 2012, we had high 14,000 registered voters. But now, in precincts one through four, we have 11,326 voters. So in a parking lot that holds possibly 80 to 90 parking spaces, and again, the parking lot at the Boutwell is really not, everybody is backing up from the spaces. It's dark in the elections, at least for a November election, it's dark. People are backing up. There's people coming out of the building. It's a very dangerous situation. And from other communities that have changed polling locations, some of them have cited parking that, you know, at dark, small children are hard to see. And some people don't back up slowly. They just don't. They back up really fast, and that puts a lot of people in harm's way out in the parking lot. The, both the Wildwood and the Boutwell have about approximately 160 spaces between the two of them. There's about two handicap parking spaces for each school, and the parking for the Wild, from the Wildwood parking lot over to the front door is a bit of a hike for a elderly person. Now, at the front of the high school, there's 17 handicap spaces, and we would make those available as handicap spaces that no one else could park in there. So that, right off the bat, they're very close in proximity to the front door. In the event parking lot, or the teachers' parking lot, as it is during the day, there's 146 parking spaces there. And then over at the Swain School parking lot, Fourth of July parking lot, there are 287 parking spaces there, which gives us a total of about 450 parking spaces compared to 160 spaces. The Board of Select, I mean, the Board of Registerers has made a positive recommendation regarding the change of polling places, because the registrar that is at the Boutwell School has been in agreement with me that something has to change there, because it's just, it's not a good place to have polling. And the last time that we made a polling location change was in 2006, and I believe the reason was for that school could be canceled at the two kindergarten elementary schools easier than it could be than canceling school at the high school. The former, former town clerk that was here in the 80s told me that one of the other reasons was that, as the population grew and the number of registered voters grew, also did the need for more parking there. And at the time, the Swain School was still there, so it wasn't the size parking lot that it is right now. So in the 80s, in the history that I gave you in the memo, in 1975 through 1988, all of the voting was done at the high school. All six precincts were at the high school. And then it was decided that there just wasn't enough parking, and I guess there was many complaints about, that people weren't able to find places to park, lines for parking and all of that. And that, of course, didn't go over well, because people should be able to find a parking space pretty readily if they're going to vote, because it only takes the average person about 10 minutes to vote. So on the, and I think that operationally, for elections and public buildings, it would be easier to set up two locations. And having four precincts in one location at the high school would be very advantageous to me, because I spend all day going between the three polling locations. And this way, I would spend all day at the high school gymnasium at the four precincts there. And then my staff can handle Town Hall, or I can come back and things like that. So we are planning many different ways to educate voters for using social media, the town's website. I would plan to go on to WCTV, as I did when we had two elections on the same day in 2013. We had the annual town election on a Tuesday, as well as a special state primary on a Tuesday. And that went very well. And also, the high school showed that we can have both doors open, the front door and the side door, allowing voters to come in for the first town meeting that we had last April. And to my knowledge, there was no problems regarding that. You know, the amount of registered voters that we're looking at now, November, it could be higher than that, because everyone registers to vote in a presidential election year. And I'm planning, I met with the police chief, and we are planning to have police coverage in November for crossing, the crossing walk from, I guess, the Swain, right over to the Church Street entrance of the school. And let's see. The school department is requesting this change. I'm trying to help them find alternative sites. And I think for alternative sites, the, the high school is very good. Right now, it was the only place that we could think of that would be able to house four precincts. Neither one of the, none of the other elementary schools would be able to hold four precincts. So I am here. I thank you for allowing me to give this proposal to you, and I am ready to answer any questions that you may have. I personally think that, it's my opinion that this will work. It will work well, and I think that we will have more parking than we do right now, which would be a plus.
Thank you, Sharon. I get the sense, Jeff, you want to compliment or chime in at this, this time?
Yes, just, just briefly, as Sharon indicated, this has been in discussion for a period of time. Mary Delai spoke with me back in September about the concerns she had with regard to the Boutwell and the Wildwood. And they were, as Sharon indicated, there was some initial discussion about implementing this in March. Clearly, it was, it was my recommendation that we take, take a step back, if you will. So the plan, if this were to be adopted by the board, would be for the March primary to continue in the existing polling locations, so Glen Road, Boutwell, and Wildwood. The next primary, the state primary, being in September, that would be at the new polling location at the high school. And that would, to some measure, be a good test run, if you will, because typically the state primary is not as well-attended, if you will, as the presidential. Then with the presidential also being at the, at the new polling place.
Thank you. Yeah, so I want to open it up to the board here. I'm just going to ask a couple of questions, if I could. The March, March is a primary, yes?
Yes.
Yeah. So then the town elections, which are Saturday, so you would, we wouldn't go to the new place hypothetically?
Until September.
Until September. And once it's there, once, assuming we approve it at some point, once that is the new polling locations, that's, that's it permanently for all elections, irrespective of where they are, or what they are?
Yes, because if we move them back and forth, or, you know, have the town election, say, at the three elementary schools, then I would have to go through notifying all the residents all over again. As it is, I will be notifying about 6,600 households. You only have to send it, there may be more than one registered voter in a household, so you, but you only need to send one to the household itself.
And that's the answer I was hoping to hear, obviously, from a consistency standpoint. You know, when I first heard that this was coming, my sort of out-of-the-gate reaction was, you know, the, the population isn't going to love the idea of change, we're kind of resistant to change. And my concern was voter turnout, right? We always, I always hope that we're going to have a great turnout at every election, and my concern was, oh, if there's any kind of shakeup or change to the locations, it's going to thwart or sort of chill people's willingness, or maybe desire, or inclination to go out, because it's somewhere different. So you, I think I heard you basically indicate that you feel confident that it will have probably the opposite of what I think.
I think that we will have a better turnout. I'm not sure on, I know that in 2008, for the presidential primary, we did 66%, okay? And the presidential primary is usually highest in a year where you're electing a new president, because in 2012, it dropped by 30%. But But Wilmington is growing. Right now, we're almost at the upper limits. Each precinct can only have four thousand residents. And at least three of the precincts right now are within a two percent margin of that. I would not be surprised at all that in two thousand and twenty, with the next diennial census, that we don't have to increase to a seventh precinct. So in projecting things forward, I think it makes sense to make a change.
Okay, thank you for, for that. So let me open it up to the board here. I guess I'll start here with Mr. McCoy, if you have commentary.
I got to say, Madam Clerk, you do an outstanding job. And I know this initiated from the superintendent's office and it's my understanding, she didn't even have a full supporter of her board to implement what we're looking at tonight. I'll be ser, I'll be honest with you, I have some issues with this and supporting it. I know she showed some concerns of the, what is it, the Boutwell School?
Yes.
She can make comparison throughout the nation. Unfortunately, we do live in a sex society and I can understand that. I think the Wilmington Police have done an outstanding job for years in protecting the safety and well-being of that school. And talking about allergies, now I'm not going to be an authority on the subject, I would like to make comment. It would have been really nice to see the superintendent here if we had some questions to ask her or the members of the school committee. I know we don't have to really make a decision tonight.
No.
Maybe we should table this, if I could, maybe we should table it until the next meeting so we can ask the superintendent some specific questions. But, you know, it's like anything else, I mean, people are, people are convenient. And I know you talk about the numbers of parking, we have the most important election coming, the presidential elections. And I'm just looking at maybe, and I understand when you're talking about the parking, but if you're looking at, let me see, three Dunkin' Donuts and you take one Dunkin' Donut away, now everyone's going to go to those two Dunkin' Donuts, obviously we have more. They're going to go there, the concentration, this may scare people off even coming out to vote that day if they see a lot of cars coming back and forth. I'm not saying that's going to be the case. You know it better than I, but, you know, I really can't rally myself around this at this particular moment. I do have other questions I would like to ask, I know there's other members here as well, but, you know.
It's been my experience that if a voter is going to come out to vote, they will. If they're not, they won't. And I don't think that parking would be one of those issues that would not make them come out to vote.
You know, I know this is something new and obviously we're wrestling with it. And I know there's other members that want to say something as well.
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in for a quick second.
I would note that Mary and I talked about her attending this evening and I suggested that it was probably not necessary at this meeting that the board would be discussing it and might opt to, certainly could take an action tonight or might opt to defer to the following meeting. As it turns out, she has had a death in, in the family or relatives, so was not able to, would not have been able to make it anyways.
All right, thank you. I know there's other members that would like to speak as well.
I think it's a very comprehensive plan, you know, in terms of the request and, you know, obviously it's a very detailed memo. You know, from a voting standpoint, I, I think I agree with you that, you know, if people are really going to vote or they're not going to vote, you know. There is some concern about the communication. I know that your office does a wonderful job, as, as do you, you know, in, in leading them in terms of communication. I'm concerned about voter confusion just by people not paying attention to their mail and, or you could try every media outlet, there's going to be, you know, a little bit of confusion as you transition to change. But I support what, what a superintendent thinks is in the best interest of the students to which he or she is responsible for. So I do want to, you know, give that some real credible consideration. Food allergies is a big topic and I think we're certainly not in the safest societies maybe we were, you know, forty, fifty years ago. But I'm open and receptive to this proposal. I'm assuming centralized voting may be a positive for you in terms of management. I would think it would be easier, you know, in local elections for candidates that are running. I'm looking at it on, in a lot of different ways. Having additional parking, I think, is actually helpful if you have police presence to cross people over. We certainly have handicap accessibility there, it's a state-of-the-art facility. Obviously, you know, more of a tactical comment, but I'm assuming with the type of foot traffic in the gym, with all the money that's been spent in there, that we would shore up the floor so that it's not, you know, warned through this whole process. I'm certainly open-minded to it. I, I don't have any major compelling reason not to support it. And I think anytime department heads and leaders, and members of the leadership team make recommendations, it's usually for, for a good purpose. So I feel like I want to be supportive of what is being stated to me as a member of the board such that this deserves this type of consideration. And I think as, as much as we can minimize risk to students, whether it's classroom time, traffic in the buildings, while at the same time potentially increasing voter turnout, I think is a positive thing. So those would be my comments at this time.
Thank you, Judy. Lou, I'll go from the inside out.
Okay. Thank you. Couple of, couple of points I'd like to make. Can, when they cancel school at the grades twelve to one, there's a, you know, there's a, there's a number of days that they have to go in school. My understanding is they don't have to, if, if they close the schools, the Boutwell...
The pre-K does not have to make up.
So if they close the school for those days, the kids will not have to make up a day. So that'd be one solution to
Right.
Close the school and that kind of opens it up for the voting. And that's what I have highlighted here. But the parking too is, there is plenty of parking in the new school, but a lot of it would be across the street in the Fourth of July building and a lot of seniors, that'd be a long walk for them.
It would be. That's why we would have the seniors, we would have the, the police direct the seniors to the Adams Street side of the, like, event door parking. There's a hundred and forty-six spaces there. And then in, right in front of the school, there's seventeen. And we have been thinking of, because that is for senior, a long walk. But right now, if there's no parking spaces at the Boutwell right out front, a lot of them have to go to the side of the building or even down closer to the West Intermediate School or sit and wait for somebody to come out.
Because perhaps they can open the doors if the school's closed to the students, maybe you can man another door where they could come in the backside of the building or...
As I have said, the school does not want more than one door open. During the day, there will be, there has been school on, school on, like, especially the state primary, okay? And we do the best that we can. We make it work. We do whatever the principal wants us to do. I usually talk with her beforehand and we do the very best that we can to keep the voter interruptions to a minimum.
Yeah, and you have two polling locations that are going to be put into one where there's still students there. Granted, they're older, but they're still young teens.
Well, we are going to put up petitions, stanchions, so to speak, of dividers. And what we would do is have the precincts for one and two would queue around one side of the gymnasium and three and four would queue around the other side. So, and I thought that would be the best way because then it wouldn't be queuing out into the cafeteria.
You still have open doors where strangers can walk in to a building where there's students. You see my point, there's
Right, but it's not as...
There's no metal detector, they have to walk through. You know, we're talking about safety of students. I, I think
Well...
High school senior is just as important as a kindergarten.
I understand that, but as the superintendent wrote in her memo, we're looking at the most vulnerable students.
Got that.
Okay? And the CARES program, I'm, I'm not really up on everything that they do, but I believe they have three-year-olds, four-year-olds there in the afternoon. So that's why, I've never had a problem at the Wildwood. The Wildwood has, you know, has worked, but she's including both of the elementary schools in her request. And the major reason for the allergy policy request also is that on election days, the cafeteria auditorium slash is closed because of the election, because we have voting going on. Usually then the students will have to eat lunch in their classroom. And if, in the cafeteria, when there is no voting, there is an allergy-free table there.
Right, it was, that was in her memo, they clean it specially.
Exactly, and...
But my point is to have nobody in the building, to close the building. The only people that are going to really be in convenience that day are the parents that might need another babysitter or, and I'm not minimalizing that either, but I just think that closing those schools kind of alleviates everything of any chance of any stranger coming into any building in town with his children. That's, that's kind of the way I look at it.
Okay.
But thank you.
All right.
Yeah, in, in following up on that, first of all, I'm, I appreciate the fact that, that the school administration and the town administration through the manager's office and your office are trying to work cooperatively. And I think, you know, we have a long track record of that and, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate that, that the superintendent is trying to address a security issue, both in terms of having the school too accessible during a, an election day. And I just accept, you know, whatever policy the, the school committee created relative to the, to the allergies, I just accept that they had a discussion about that and that's their policy and that's what they do and, and I respect that. But in follow-up to Mrs. Smaglia's point, what we're being presented is changing all of this around i- in a way that the, the end result is that we're going to cancel school for students in the high school. That's going to cost them, you know, a day towards their one hundred and eighty or whatever the, I believe it's a hundred and eighty days of school.
Right.
They're going to have to make that up in the summer. To Mr. Smaglia's point, I'm no more comfortable having, you know, high school students in a building that's accessible to potentially nine thousand people than I am having pre-K and K school students in a building that might be accessible to roughly half of that. So I, I mean, to my way of thinking that, that there's two, there seems to be two veins upon which this request is being made. One is at the school department's request because they are concerned about security and specifically what they can do with their allergy policy if schools are in session during the elections. It seems to me we address both of those concerns simply by closing those two pre-K and K schools during the day of the election. And, and the children are safe and, you know, and the, and the allergy policy isn't implicated and there's less voter confusion as, as Ms. O'Connell had flagged as a potential issue. And then I, I look at from the standpoint of the clerk's office in trying to address some of the concerns that you've had at, at various polling places. I mean, I, I don't want to diminish the concern about the time that it takes to vote, but I think you had indicated ten minutes. I don't know if that was...
It's the national average.
Yeah, I mean, from my standpoint, as the clerk has indicated, as people up here have indicated, people are either going to vote or they're not. Whether it takes them five minutes or ten minutes or fifteen minutes, you know, there's a segment of the population that's either going to show up on election day or they're not. And, and that, you know, ten minutes difference, I, I don't believe makes a difference to, to the folks who are intent on showing up. And then I think the other thing that I find interesting is the two, you know, the two bits of information that the clerk also provided, one of them being with, with the, the early voting location. You know, if I'm wrong and, and the, you know, the sheer number of voters is somehow deterring folks who would otherwise vote, they now have an option that gives them the ability to show up to this location that's not a school for however many days. I apologize, I can't remember.
That's okay.
So, you know, so with, even with that change,
Mm-hmm.
You would think that is going to help address some of the concerns that, that we've had from the town side of it, from the, from the, you know, the clerk and, and the administration. And, you know, and then to, to the points that Mr. Smaglia made, you know, I, I don't, I'm not sure we can control exactly where people park based on their age. Certainly if people have a disability, we can see to it that we have an appropriate number of parking spaces allocated. If we need to find a way to maybe allocate a few more spaces at the Boutwell or the Wildwood, maybe that makes sense, I, I don't know. But I, you know, I look at that wonderful new facility we have, it's not a criticism of that place. You know, you can only design so much and that's a heck of a walk even at the closest parking space. So aside from folks who, who have a disability that would qualify for one of those spots, that's, that's still a, a heck of a walk. So, you know, I, I just look at it that, and I, and I support the superintendent and her concern for security. I just think that there's a more direct way to assure the security of those kids and that's for the sake of two, maybe three days in a, in a school year for them, you know, just not to, to have school on those days. It seems, seems to be a lot more direct solution to that, to that side of it. So, you know, I'm, I'm certainly willing to, to continue to listen, but if I were pressed, you know, to make a decision tonight, I'd, I'd be opposed to it. And then the other, the other one was the clerk's information regarding our increase in, you know, the fact that our voter population in Wilmington is steadily increasing and, you know, perhaps by two thousand, we may have to add another precinct. You know, back to the whole issue of voter confusion. So we're going to, you know, change this whole system around and now create two polling places instead of three. We have four precincts there, we have two here, we've got the early polling location. And then if that projection bears itself out and we're adding another precinct, then we're changing it all around again in two thousand and twenty at a point when we really don't have a choice, right? I mean, if, if the, if the numbers require us to increase the number of precincts, that's, you know, we're going to have to figure that out. So, you know, taking all of those things together, you know, I, I think that the, to my knowledge, the, the police department has been able to manage the Boutwell and the Wildwood. I, I don't, you know, dismiss some of the challenges and the concerns over safety, but I think you're going to get, the sheer volume of vehicular traffic is going to create those same safety concerns no matter which location you're in. Whether you have people walking across Church Street to get to the polling location, whether you have, you know, a hundred and sixty spots.
One forty-six at the Adams Street.
Thank you. All right, so, you know, a hundred and forty-six over in the Adams Street lot, this, that's still a lot of vehicular traffic. And so I just don't think that necessarily insulates us from, from some of those legitimate safety concerns. So, you know, all of those things together and it bits and pieces of what everybody has said really, you know, leads me to the conclusion that I think we can manage the concerns in the current configuration, you know.
Just one thing, the high school would not have to make up a day because the superintendent said it would be a professional day for teachers. They would be required to still come into school, but that's not a make-upable day.
Okay, and fair enough, and you probably know better than I, but, but it would still be a day that the kids aren't in the school, right?
Right.
And they're not learning and I, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, again, I'm not dismissive of that concept for pre-K and K school, but I do think there's a difference there too. If I've, if I, if I'm going to get, you know, give kids a day off from school and lose the opportunity to be learning for a day, frankly, I'd rather have that pre-K and that K school, you know, rather than that high school population losing a day, but...
Right, to, to that point, the superintendent did not specifically, did not, to me anyways, express a particular concern about... express a particular concern about, in the case of the November election, the, the students, you know, not, that, not being there that day. Obviously, I'm sure it's a concern anytime there, the kids aren't in the school. But my understanding, and I would have to confirm with her, is that there's, there's, they do have to meet the one hundred and eighty-day attendance requirement, and I think there's some additional days that they actually have, that's, you know, because obviously there's snow days and so on, and they have, after a certain number, it's only after that certain number that they're required to make up. So, there is a measure of reserve, if you will. But clearly, the, the point that was made earlier about the Boutwell and the Wildwood, the fact that those schools, at least historically, if, if school is closed, the, the K and pre-K don't have to make up those days, has historically been accurate. I, I presume that is still the case. We did not talk about that specifically. I, my understanding is that one of the reasons that the change was made from the West to the Boutwell was for that reason, so that if school had to be, if the school had to be closed for an election, it could be without creating a problem with a hundred and eighty days. I think historically, at least more recently, between the, the, the school superintendent and, and the town, there was, there were certain elections where school remained open, and then the larger elections, the school was closed. But in terms, in terms of the, the, the high school, as Sharon has indicated, the gymnasium will accommodate the, the four precincts. You know, we're, we're basically, you know, we were confronted with a, an issue that the superintendent had raised, you know, the concerns that have already been cited, and we were attempting to accommodate her request, and this was really the, really the only alternative that would make sense, even though there might be some shortcomings to it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Prior to, since I've been here in two thousand and six, we had closed, the superintendent of schools had always closed on the March first, or whenever, March primary for presidential primary, and always for the November election. Usually, there was school for September because, as Jeff has stated, it's very low turnout usually at that election. We don't get, usually if we have eighteen hundred voters town-wide for six precincts, that's pushing it. So, I, I, we have had school on the primary, on the September primary, but it was always canceled during the March primary and the, because that's only once every four years that it has to be closed then. And then every time there was an election in November, the previous superintendent always closed school.
And so I guess, to, you know, to that point, again, I understand there were concerns from the clerk's side and the, and the town's side, but the, the concerns from the school's side, sounds as though we're only talking about one day. We're not even talking about now, you know, canceling school and those two pre-K and K schools for, for three days, but, but only one day beyond that which parents are accustomed to, or, or the school administration is accustomed to. So, to me, that's, that's all the more reason why that alternative addresses the, is the best way to address the school's side's concerns.
If I might suggest, it, it perhaps would be advisable for the board to take this under advisement, and perhaps the superintendent could attend the meeting on the twenty-fifth and address some of these issues, and any questions that the board may have.
We're not, you know, that's, that's where my head was going, was that we're really not pushed into having to make a final decision on this tonight or take a vote, because the next election is, is already, is stated to take place in the existing polling locations. So, I mean, if, if that's acceptable to everyone here, I'd like to ask the manager to invite the superintendent to attend our next meeting, and if those of you that had some of the questions, please.
Chairman, I mean, as more and more we talk about it, I hear what Lou had to say, I hear what Mike had to say, and it just reaffirms how I truly feel about keeping it the way it is. And I think there's valid points, multiple valid points, and, you know, and like I said, the superintendent's not here, I don't think it's gonna change my mind until the next meeting, to be totally honest. I'm hearing more reasons why not to accept this proposal. I mean, I have no issue even voting it for tonight, but, you know, whatever the board wants to do, I wouldn't even have a problem voting for it tonight to, unfortunately not to support the request.
I, I mean, I, I appreciate that, that candor, and I'm sure even proponents of this change would, you know, I, I likewise feel pretty confident about, about the position I have here, but I, I don't, you know, understanding there were reasons why the superintendent couldn't be here tonight, I don't have any objection to, to, you know, extending that, that courtesy and that invitation as well, so.
Yeah, if I were pushed to a vote, I would vote personally to not reject the, the proposal, not based on my support of the proposal, but rather I'd wanna, I'd wanna give the, the superintendent the opportunity to come and sort of make the presentation live, and answer any questions or concerns. That may or may not have an impact on anyone's feelings on this, and, and that's certainly fine, but that's, that's the way, where I come down on it. So, I mean, certainly it's, it's up to anyone on this, on the board who would like to make a motion if, if they want to. Otherwise, I'd like to, to continue it to the next meeting.
In that, just questioning out, you know, what do other communities do that face the same situation? Do they, you know, have you looked at other towns?
Yes. Reading has always had their elections at the New Field House that they have, and it's, it's very large. They have all eight precincts of their, of electing there. And Burlington has, also has eight or nine precincts, and they have it all at Burlington High School. Now, I'm not sure exactly when, I checked with Chokesbury, they still have it in outlying areas at more than one location, but she did say to me, for convenience and being in one place all day so that to kind of keep an eye on things, she would, you know, she thinks having it at one location would be very good. Bill Ricka has it at different locations. Wakefield, they have an interim clerk there, and she told me that they are thinking of moving from where they are now, which I believe is the high school, and going to, back to the smaller elementary schools. So, you know, I think it's what the community is used to. I feel very confident that it, it would work at the high school quite well, and I believe that voter education would be, and I know some of you have mentioned, you're right, we can't, I'll have people come in, and I'll say, well, I put it on this, and I put it on this, and I put, well, I don't watch any of those things. Okay. That's why we send a notice to each household. If they choose not to open it, you know, I can't do anything about that. But I feel very confident that if it was at your decision to move it to the high school, it would work very well. I would make it work very well. And as for the problems at the Boutwell, if there's no school, there's no problem. The only time that there is this issue is because between school getting out at three o'clock or whatever time they get out, and then the CAS program getting out, there's just, I don't like that there's so many, so much co-mingling of all these, and I can't say, I'm sorry, you look suspicious, you can't come into Bo today. You know, that's, you know, as, right now, there's a bill in front of the legislature regarding pri- schools being considered private property, and whether you can ask people that look suspicious to be escorted away from the school. You know, I even had someone come in this morning and wants to put a petitioned article in about it, and where do you draw the line at who looks suspicious, so? And that's not for me to say, you know? So, I, I think there's a lot of factors that were going through the superintendent's mind when she decided this, and, you know, I'm happy to come back on the twenty-fourth with the superintendent being present, and if you think of more questions for me over the next two weeks, I'm happy to answer them. Whichever way you wish to go is the way that I will make the election work.
So, at the end of the day, it's either we, we continue the conversation with Sharon and the superintendent on the twenty-fourth, or we take a vote this evening.
I'm in favor of tableing it, I didn't speak on that topic, because I, I feel as a courtesy to the superintendent, I mean, you know, it's still an, an ongoing new relationship. We haven't had some of these conversations with her, she wasn't able to make it due to, you know, a death in the family, and I, I think as long as it's understood, and whoever's delivering that communication, perhaps Jeff, maybe you could give her a call, and give her the tenor and the sentiments of the board at a high level. And I just think, you know, as a professional courtesy, as long as she knows upfront that there's been, you know, a significant amount of commentary that wasn't in favor of the proposal, so we're certainly not looking to waste anybody's time, but I, I feel that as a professional courtesy, she should have the benefit to have her say that if it gets voted down, that she feels that she was part of representing her proposal in person if she chooses to do so. That's my opinion.
I share it. Mike, are you, are you amenable to, to two more weeks?
I don't have a problem, you know, tableing until the next meeting is fine, I said that early as well.
So, so it be. Very well, thank you. Thank you, Sharon.
Okay.
Which brings us to communications, Jeff, at your convenience.
Under communications, so, we have a notice of intervention regarding the Kinder Morgan project. This was issued to Kimberly Bose, the Secretary of, of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding the Northeast Energy Direct Project. As you recall, the board took a vote on October thirteenth to become an intervenor, and noted that the, expressed the opposition to the project. This correspondence was issued on the seventeenth of December, notes amongst other things that the project runs for two-point-two miles through Wilmington, affects twenty-four properties, including the town, and also notes the concern about the risks to two of the town's drinking water, supply wells, and the Benevento quarry, and then specifically points out that given Wilmington's history of losing some of its existing well water to contamination, and in light of the quarry, that we have some particularly unique potential impacts. Next is correspondence from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, notice to extend the comment period or the opportunity to be an intervener. They had some, apparently some technical glitches with their computer system over the holidays, and as a result, people were not able to e-file, and so they extended the comment period or the opportunity to intervene to January fifteenth. It's a memorandum from me regarding the Surface Transportation Board relative to the Environmental Protection Agency's letter to NET. I'll just read this, it's a, briefly, "The Surface Transportation Board issued correspondence dated December fourteenth, providing interested parties until January fourth to comment on EPA's letter that explained the recommendation, their recommendation that the Surface Transportation Board no longer defer consideration for NET's development plans until EPA issues a record of decision. At the town's request, the Surface Transportation Board granted an extension of the comment period until January fourteenth. Staff has been working with Dan Deutsch from council's office and GeoInsight to prepare a comment letter. That comment letter will be finalized early next week." We have correspondence from the Environmental Protection Agency to the Surface Transportation Board regarding the NET project, and they note some of their more recent history here that on September tenth of two thousand ten, as well as September twelfth, two thousand eleven, EPA asked the Surface Transportation Board to defer its environmental review of NET's proposal until the relevant remedial investigation and feasibility study was completed. Based upon NET's August eighteenth, two thousand fifteen status report requesting that the Surface Transportation Board lift the deferral, EPA now states that they have no basis to continue to request the deferral, but they do request that the Surface Transportation Board conduct an environmental impact statement versus an environmental assessment. There's correspondence from Olin, this is a letter to EPA, regarding the Surface Transportation Board, is consideration of that correspondence. "Olin agrees that the Surface Transportation Board does not need to defer on the granting of NET's petition to pursue their development. They do take issue with EPA's characterization of the site, and specifically note the containment area." So, Olin is pushing for the Surface Transportation Board to remove the deferral on the potential development. Then we have correspondence from the Surface Transportation Board granting an extension on the comment period on EPA's November sixth letter. Initially, this notes that the board accepted EPA's November sixth comment, comments into the record and provided a twenty-day comment period on EPA's letter with a deadline, deadline of January fourth. So, this was the initial letter, giving the comment period until December fourth. We have correspondence from NET's council responding to a request by DEP in the town to extend that comment period. As it turned out, obviously with the holidays, it was gonna be challenging to meet that January fourth deadline, and NET's council was agreeable to a limited extension. Then the, the correspondence, again, from the Surface Transportation Board, does grant an extension to that comment period from January fourth to January fourteenth. So, we, we are working under that deadline right now, and I would expect, in fact, I believe I saw an email tonight from Dan Deutsch with a comment letter to review, so we'll have that out before the fourteenth. Last piece of correspondence is a memo from me to the Finance Committee outlining the department meetings during the course of their budget review in February. It starts off on February second with the overview session, including IT, revenue, general government, debt service unclassified, then continues essentially through the month of February, and then in early March, it wraps up with the Shawshin Tech and the Wilmington Public Schools. Also, there's a calendar that outlines the various steps that we go through that lead up to a town meeting.
Thank you. We do have a board to consider, if you want to highlight us on the surplus property discussion on Sheldon Ave.
Yes, there, there's two pieces of property on Sheldon Ave map, fifty parcels sixteen and eighteen. You may recall, they were voted, deemed surplus in, in two thousand fourteen, and voted as such at the annual town meeting. The next step in the process is for me to request authorization from the board of selectmen to issue an RFP to interested bidders in the case of parcel sixteen. In the case of parcel 16, the minimum value, as determined by the assessor, is $5,100, and the minimum value to bid on parcel 18 is $16,800. And the proceeds from the sale of this property will go into the capital stabilization account. So I would be looking for a vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize the issuance of a request for proposal.
Make a motion to accept the proposal.
Motion has been made. Seconded. Is there further discussion?
Yes, I just, since the, I just wanna make it clear that based on the memorandum that we received from the manager, that when he initiates that bid process, for anybody who might be interested, that will include some accommodations for the restriction that was incorporated into the motion at town meeting.
Yes, that is correct.
So with that included in the motion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. I think that was both of those. All right, public comments, we are at. Any comments from out yonder? I see none. And so we will jump right to new business and committee reports, and I'll start with Mr. Newhouse. Do you have anything to offer?
I don't.
Mr. Semaglia.
I don't. I'm good tonight. Happy New Year.
Back to business. Mr. McCoy.
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. O'Connell.
I'll keep it brief. Just wanted to just make a quick comment and thank the town manager and his office for seeing that the construction bid went out for the Antioch Farm project in January as scheduled, and certainly will be bringing more pertinent updates to the board at a later date, but just wanted to let you all know, as has been released out today in the press on the apple, that that bid did go out on time. So thank you.
That's excellent. Great progress. Thank you for that. From my perspective, I just want to let you know that I will be, next Friday, I think it is, next Friday and Saturday, I will be attending the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting and Conference, the exposition and the various breakout sessions, as well as any of the sessions that require votes on behalf of the town. So I'll be your representative there. I think I'm the only one of us that will be attending, so any meaningful content that I come in contact with, I'll gather extra copies and some swag and some other things, and I'll report back to you when I return. So that's what I had. And we're back to business. Well, Happy New Year to everybody. Important dates, Jeff.
Mr. Chair, before I get to that, if I could just bring one item up. I received a text actually yesterday from Joe Martinello asking about the prospect of having a vigil in honor of Frank Kelly on the common. We've gone back and forth a bit, including today, and it appears what he is looking for is a request to conduct this vigil on January 18th at 6:00 PM. He's estimating it will be relatively brief, about perhaps 20 minutes.
Where?
On the town common.
Which would require a vote this evening?
Yeah, typically, the board would vote to authorize an event on the common.
Obviously, the timing of it didn't allow us to get it on the agenda, but is there a motion to approve that request?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's made by Mr. Semaglia.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor of the request? That's unanimous. Thank you to Mr. Martinello for arranging that.
With regard to important dates, we have through January 15th, the curbside collection of Christmas trees. January 18th, town offices are closed for the Martin Luther King holiday. January 25th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here at 7:00 PM. February 1st, the Board of Selectmen's meeting is the budget presentation for fiscal 2017. February 5th is the last day to submit petition articles for inclusion on the warrant for the annual town meeting on April 30, 2016.
Thank you. Unless there's anything else, I'd accept a motion to adjourn. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Yes, unanimous. Thank you, and good night.